Welcome to the March 11, 2013 special study session. The roll call, please.
Mayor Slater.
Here.
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember McGinnis.
Here.
Councilmember Pennington.
Here.
Councilmember Teetz.
Received an email from Councilman Teetz last night that he would not be there due to a business obligation, so I will present the resolution that the Troy City Council hereby excuses the absence of Councilman Teetz at the City Council's special meeting of Monday, March 11, 2013. Support moved by the Chair and supported by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming that we excuse Councilman Teetz. Discussion? The vote, please.
Mayor Slater.
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz.
Motion passes. Tonight, we have two discussion items. C1, Economic and Community Development, which is a continuation of working together, what kind of city do we want to be? And C2 is a capital project update, so I will turn the floor over to City Manager Fishnick for those two items.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. As we continue in this educational session as a praimed to the budget process, we started with our best departments. We had the middle portion with our best departments, and now we save our best for last.[239.68][239.68](Laughter). So I know Chief Mayor is in here, and he went first, so I just wanted to make sure we didn't have anyone left out. But we have two very good presentations tonight, and I want to kind of provide the framework for this. The economic and community development is still part of the working together, what kind of a city. Then we thought the capital projects would be a, you know, it's such a large part of the budget. It's not really a working together piece. It's simply a summary of the projects and going over some of them status-wise and giving you the framework again for the capital amounts that are spent in the city of Troy is rather remarkable. So the first one, Mark Miller will lead, is the economic and community development.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As we said, we're going to give a summary of economic and community development to improve building inspection, community affairs function, economic development function, more history on economic development, engineering department, and planning department. Those directors will present that information as we go forward. So in the demo overview, which sort of guides this whole division was first, 2008, there was a Zucker Report which sets forth 102 recommendations on how to provide a development friendly community and sort of gives us a framework for most of these departments on how to move forward. 2009, the real estate and development department was dissolved, functions were split between engineering and the city manager's office. And in 2009, City Manager John Zerlai mandated that the planning department, engineering department, and building department cut 40 percent of their budget. And that you will see in each of these presentations on how those departments accomplish. There's a considerable amount of restructuring, elimination of departments, and transferring functions between departments. Also, the creative zoning administrator, and obviously, the privatization of the building department function in 2010 is critical to the overall situation. And I'll move to the next slide, and we're going to talk a little bit about building inspection. As you can see, in 2008, there were 23 full-time employees in our municipal building department. Slowly, we reduced that staffing in 2009, and in 2010, when we adopted a budget that identified that there would be six people in the building department, because that was the full time. However, right probably within 20 days of the July 1, start of fiscal year, we did execute the contract with SafeBuild, and they came in. When they first started, they brought in eight employees, and they recently have added a ninth full-time employee because of the increased workload and permits. Here we have a couple different charts. Revenue, you can see, 2008, we had 1.17 million dollars, and that started to go down and bottoming out in '09, but then it starts to go back up. And the one thing that you will notice is that it peaked, but we started measuring it a little differently in 2011. And then, under operating history, 2008, you can see, we spent over $2 million for our department, and that slowly went down, but what's really just, you go from 2.1 million, and now it's costing us approximately 1.1 million. And it's functioning at a million dollars. Last week, we'll talk a little bit how we can accomplish that. Number permits, we were 1,500 in 2008. They started slowly going down and bottoming out in 2011, with just under 1,000. 12, 13, we're at about 1,700, and that's predicted to probably go up just a little bit. And there's a chart here which shows the projected value with building permits. You can see right here, there's a real spike in the number of permits that are occurring basically right now. Now, in identifying our cost reductions, the primary reason we entered into an agreement with SafeBuild that started July 1 in 2010. Also, we moved the zoning and administering duties to the planning department along with sign approvals to the planning department, code enforcement to the planning department, and Board of Zoning of Appeals. What this did is it removed all of the non-core building department functions to another department. And then, since that time, SafeBuild has been very diligent in digitizing records, and that's going to be very helpful, because we get about two or three ZODA requests, not ZODAs, FOIA, Freedom of Information request a day, and it's very, if they have to run downstairs and go into the basement and dig up old prints, it takes a lot of time and effort. We actually anticipate to digitize the records and then have the ability to go online for people just to look it up by having an address. And lastly, the building permit fees are times 80 percent equals the cost. This situation with SafeBuild is no risk, because if there are no permit fees, there is no cost to the city. I'd like to have Steve Burns come up here and talk about two slides and what SafeBuild does.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's glad to be here tonight, and to talk to you a little bit about what we do. SafeBuild's company's been around for 20 years, providing municipal building department services solely for municipalities who do not work in the private sector. We've worked in over 120 municipalities throughout the country, and hopefully, that continues to grow. And this is a prime example, in my opinion, of where a public-private partnership really works and is a benefit to both the community and to the business world. We tailor our services based on the needs of the community, based on their permit fees, structure, and so forth. That's where we come up with the 80 percentage of the fees. That's what we take to operate and run our department, and we give the rest, the rest goes back to the municipality. Some of the action statements specifically in Troy, we as a company always strive to retain existing staff whenever possible, so existing staff are a good fit structurally and meet our core values and our service-oriented type business. And certainly, we want to bring them into the, to our company and work, have them continue to work in the same municipality. Another thing that we did day one was we improved the plan review tracking and response process to meet our, we have a five-day residential and a 10-day commercial plan review term in time that's contractually guaranteed. We also did a lot of organizational things when we first came into the department to try and improve the way the workflows went through the department. We also tried to use technology as to our benefit, so laptops in the field with all our inspectors with 4G air cards, so they have real-time resulting going in into the computer, linking back into the city server through that air card. That's real-time inspection results for the contractor, so if they need to know what's happened on that inspection, they get those results very quickly.
Next slide. Did you want to make a question or concern?
I think I'm talking, okay. Thanks. Well, we identified pressure concerns. One, can SafeBuild adapt to the increased workflows that we're seeing, and they did hire somebody when? Did you hire someone full-time?
Eleven, twelve. So no gathering?
Eleven, twelve, last year. The desire to provide a one-stop counter, what that means is the, is to have one place where people would go for engineering, planning, and building department, and so they can get all the answers. But we have some, can't really provide that given our physical configuration. Cost of technological improvements. And then, one thing we're searching for, and I think SafeBuild agrees with this, is the stability through a longer-term contract for building inspection services. And then, finally, when you have privatization, the role that I have to work a lot more on is monitoring of SafeBuild, ensuring that they're meeting their obligations in the contract. Future needs. These are really related technologies, like large screen monitors, we're trying to achieve online permit middles, online credit card payments, online monitoring of permits, and online issuance of permits. These are things that they're doing in Silicon Valley, as an example. These are the highest performing building departments, and we're trying to strive to do it slowly but surely, we are doing it. And obviously, completion of the digitization of records. Another thing we need to look at is Zucker Report. You see where we're at on there, what we've accomplished, what we haven't, and what really isn't valid anymore. And then, finally, I identify this, and this is one thing that the Zucker Report says, that we need to strengthen our coordination with the IT department, because really, where this department will have its improvements is in technology. I'd like to bring Cindy Stroud in to talk about community affairs.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. That's the mission statement for community affairs, and if you look at that and you look back on your vision statement and goals, we mirror each other, because some of yours build a strong sense of community, communicate internally and externally in a timely and accurate manner, involve all stakeholders in communication, and encourage volunteerism and new methods for community involvement, plus to market the advantages of living and working in Troy. That's all part of what community affairs does. And some of what we do, as you can see, a lot of it, providing information, whether it's written, using the website, social media, cable programming, and the liaison to the Intergovernmental Cable Communications Authority and the cable companies, televise, you know we televise our meetings, ZBAs, planning meetings, public service announcements, the popular annual financial report, I work with Tom, so we can produce that and get that out to all the residents, the economic resource guide, I work with Mark and Glenn for anything related to economic development, and other directories things, weekly crime alert, I do that for the police department, and now we just started an e-business news, and we're also doing some e-city news. We've got about 10,000 people in our e-database, so we want to keep building that up. Producing crime and fire prevention cable programs, done a lot of that in the past couple of years. And then, advertising for city programs, working with economic development. Again, we have a presence in automation alleys, Exology, Oakland County's Prosper, and then the ASource, Metro Detroit Relocation Guide, because we want to also get out there to the world to get the people to come in here, whether it's moving to Troy or moving your business. And then, city proclamations. And also, when somebody retired in public works, they moved over to the community development block grant, so I do that application every year. And then, the home tour program, we've got about 90 seniors and persons with disabilities. We mow their lawns, and then we shovel their snow. Staffing overview, I've been here 15 years, and then, it was pretty much, what, 2008, '09, that was the high point, three full-time and then six part-time, and '09 went down to just myself as full-time and then six part-timers. After that, I was moved to the manager's office. We still have two part-timers. They are primarily to do cable, to help with cable productions. I don't have anybody in the office. And then, our revenue, we receive 1 percent PEG fees for public education and government. We receive around 150,000, and we split it. Half of it goes to government, and then the other half goes to public access. When I used to have more part-time staff, we would help the education aspect of it, help them do some of their shoots for them, but pretty much, public access is doing a lot of that. A lot of our money, as you can see, with Tricaster, the cameras in here, cameras in the council chambers. Some of our systems have gotten a little older over the years, so we've had to replace cameras, audio systems. Our Tricaster was recently upgraded for us, because that's how we've got to broadcast. Cost reductions over the years, we, most recent, the Troy Today, we changed the paperweight. When we changed out, we did a bid for that, and by cutting the paperweight, it saved us approximately 30,000 a year and decreased postage costs. The annual water quality report that I do for DPW, we used to mail that out separately to all residents, by law, we have to do that. So now, that's in the summer Troy Today, so you'll see that instead of, that saves postage and printing costs. We've also done a lot of citizen feedback through Troy Today surveys, water bill inserts, and website surveys. We have also eliminated some programs. We were doing a highly successful, you all, some of you are graduates, the Citizens Academy, that was a nine-week program to educate residents, and we've got more than 250 graduates. I know Jim Warpatinsky over there, he's a graduate. But just to teach them, you know, about what goes on in the city, what each department does. We also, National Night Out, we haven't done that for a couple of years, but the police had some reductions, and myself, but that was, you know, a big block party, police, fire, they got out there, and we, you know, got residents to come out and talk to the police and fire, wanting them to be the eyes and ears against crime in the community. Selling ads for Troy Today, that's the way to offset printing costs and what we used to do with the city calendar, which is also, we have cut out. So that's a little harder without staff. Public service announcement, we do that for any kind of programs. We have some police, we have some fire PSAs. The Ethnic Issues Advisory Board, that was cut out by city council. And then, Sites and Sounds of the World was the big event that we showcased Troy's cultural diversity. You all know how diverse we are. We used to do a weekly news program called Spotlight on Troy, and that was on our cable channel. We also have a Troy radio station, unfortunately, haven't really done anything with that. That was something that, it's there, but don't have the staff for that. We, daily updates on Facebook and Twitter, I'm probably averaging maybe weekly. It'd be nice if we could do an update every day. And then, we've cut out, you know, summer concerts, the drive-in movies, some of our fun programs. Then, operating, as you can see, our budget back in '08, '09, that's probably when it was at its high point. And then, 2009, '10 went down, and now I am under the city manager's office and the police department. And then, the capital expenditures, you see, that is related to the PEG fees that we Pressure's concerns, going from three full-time employees and six part-time employees down to one, it's made it really difficult to market and promote all of our city events and programs. Recreation, the library, even the nature center and the historic village, we want them to succeed. Anything with public works, police and fire. And what I had said again, no time to get additional advertisers for Troy Today, and that's something we do try to, our economic resource guide, that is strictly done with advertising, so we don't pay for that, and that's a great tool for Glenn to take out to businesses. Again, I think a pressure concern, what all the other departments have, the furlough time, mandatory pay reduction, that kind of ties in with number five, office coverage is challenging when it's just myself or Glenn's in the office if we're both gone. And then, keeping the website and the other social media updated, which is very, very important. Future needs, establish an effective communication strategy and utilize appropriate staffing levels to provide the information to our residents, our businesses, and our visitors. Develop a comprehensive plan to determine what avenues are necessary to reach our desired audiences. And bringing together the neighborhood associations to assist in disseminating information. We have a lot of active neighborhood associations. I know I live in one that were very active, and they have newsletters, they have websites. So I'm trying to get the contacts for them. We had some information in the last Troy Today, so they're starting to fill in their information. We also have a page on the website now, so if you're thinking of moving in, you can go on there, maybe see what, you know, what is Raintree offer, what are the bylaws, what are the dues, same thing with Emerald Lakes. And then, we want to continue to increase our e-news database to reach more residents and businesses.
Thank you, Cindy.
You're welcome. I'm going to quickly go through former real estate and development department, we used to have one. And what that department did is it worked on condemnation for the acquisition of land for roads, and also dealt with a lot of the purchase process, you know, recording easements and preparing those. And also, they were responsible for the economic development function of the city. Really quick, you can see, we budgeted just under a million dollars, half a million dollars, excuse me, and three and a half full-time employees, and that department was dissolved, and the real estate function was moved to engineering while economic development to the manager's office. And on May 13, Glenn's not speaking tonight, just Glenn, raise your hand, Glenn Lepin, he's responsible day-to-day on the ground for economic development. We're going to make a presentation, how this division brings creative environment investment together and provide that to city council at the May 13 meeting. And I want you to bring up Steve Annett, City Engineer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So what does engineering do? Well, engineering, we primarily plan and implement the projects contained in the capital improvement program. That's about 80 percent of what we do. Unlike building department, who primarily deals with development and building permits and inspections, we do capital improvement projects. We do road, water, sewer, drain, sidewalks, and the occasional transit center. We also have the service department. We are capable of all phases of design and construction, including surveying, preparing plans and specifications, managing construction, inspection, contractor payments, and close out of the projects. We do use consultants, we always have. We use consultants when our capacity has exceeded or when specialty work is required, such as architectural or brick inspections, and we do have some bridges in Troy, and for studies and master planning needs. We also use consultants for large projects, usually federal aid, major road projects, such as Rochester Road, which is the last major federal aid project that we did. And testing services for concrete and asphalt testing and trench compaction testing during construction of utilities. And for that, we use consultants. We have three general engineering service consultants, HRC, Hell Rock and Clark, they've been around for a long time, going back to the 60s. About eight years ago, we added Orchard Hiltz in the climate, and we added Spalding, Decker Orchard Hiltz, we use primarily for traffic consulting services, doing reviews of traffic impacts in connection with proposed developments and that kind of thing. With the three consultants, we were able to pick and match the consultant that we think best has the strongest capability to match the project that we have at hand. We have two testing consultants, Professional Services Industries, which we just added, I think about eight years ago as well, and then, testing engineers and consultants that we've had for quite a prolonged period of time. As I mentioned, our core engineering services are related to capital projects, they're planning and project design and construction administration. Traffic engineering, down at the bottom, we used to have a traffic engineer, and that was, that person happened to move to another job. And slowly, over a year or so, that position was eliminated, and now, Bill Gudry wears the traffic engineer hat. Real estate, as Mark mentioned, real estate is now a part of engineering, and that real estate person does property acquisitions in connection with federal road projects and easement acquisitions, and a whole myriad of other things related to real estate, remnant parcels, we have a lot of those from our capital projects, and from time to time, we do sell those remnant parcels for purposes of development. And site plan review, at the bottom, that's really our smallest category of activity, accounting for only about 10 percent of our time during the average year. This is what we looked like in 2005. We had 30 total positions, 23 full-time and seven part-time. We had an operating budget of approximately $3 million and a capital budget of approximately $25 million. And on average, the capital budget is about $20 million a year. This year, it happened to be $25 million. One of the big projects we were doing was a federal aid project, Big Beaver from Rochester to Dequender, where it was widened completely, three continuous, three lanes. We also added a right turn lane at Dequender, and that was a project, that was a federal aid project, but with the staff that we had at that time, we were actually able to do all of the engineering for that, including the contract administration and inspection in-house. In 2013, we have 15 total positions, 11 full-time, three part-time, and one is vacant. The vacancy is in our inspection division. Our operating budget is about 1.9 million. It's about a 35 percent reduction from what it was in 2005 in our capital budget. This particular year, it's about 15 million, but on average, it's about 20 million. Our capital projects revenue mainly is from capital projects that we do. We bill for our services, for design and inspection and contract administration, and that amounts to about 1.5 million a year. Next is the telecommunications, or also known as the METRO Act, where we receive approximately $250,000 a year. That's based on the length, total miles of telecommunications lines in your city, and we use that for administering and inspecting permits for installations. Permits and plan review, approximately $300,000 a year in revenue, and again, that's a minor portion of our activity, for a total of about a little over $2 million, and that is approximately equal to, covers our operating expenditures. Here's the history of our budget, which is the actual expenditures. 2005 and '06 was our highest, and we do a lot of testing every year almost ever since, and in 2011, we're at 1.7 million. I don't think there's ever been a year where we've exceeded our budget, we've always been slightly below. Right now, our pressures and concerns, number one is our little inspection staff. Right now, we have no full-time inspector. We have two part-time inspectors, which are limited on their hours. And as the economy improves, and those that do inspection are looking for jobs all over, we think it may be difficult to attract inspectors to come and work for the city of Troy, and also retaining staff as the economy improves and there are other job openings out there for people at profession. for, for people at profession. As a result, we do rely more on consultants for inspection. That results in higher cost. We have a small staff as it is. So oversight of multiple consultants on multiple projects is difficult from time to time when we have a large number of projects going on. We have a large project coming up and we will need consult, we will need inspectors from consultants more than ever. We do have some difficulty with furlough time. Furlough time cuts into our ability to provide inspection, construction oversight, contract administration. As you know, during the spring, summer and fall and through mid-November, construction is in full swing. And when we have inspectors missing, we have to fill that in with a consultant or when we have a survey staff missing because of furlough, then we have to pull somebody from the office to cover that, to cover that. And sometimes it is a challenge. Our, our future needs, well, our number one future need is attracting and retaining quality engineers and other staff. With required, excuse me, with retirements looming in the future, with the economy improving, with staff doing job shopping and leading to some turnover, it may be difficult to, to operate under those circumstances. And also what we'll probably see is a loss of, of institutional infrastructure knowledge. And what that is, is those of us that have been here for a long time, we know it's in the ground, we know why it's there, we know what the problems are, we don't have to go read a report about it, and we know what problems we have now and what we're likely to have in the future. One of those, an example of that is the SSO elimination project in the Evergreen Farmington District. That particular problem dates back to the mid-'90s, when a particular storm occurred on June the 17th and 18th, when we had 2.9 inches of rain in a 24-hour period. And there were a number of homes that had sewer backups in section 18. And ever since then, the county and the city, we've done a lot of work, investigative work. We've tightened up our system, we've done sewer linings, we've done manual repairs to get the infiltration and inflow out, but we still have a problem. We're closing in on this problem. The county is in fact, and we think we found the, the county has found the smoke we've done as to why this is occurring. And we may, in the near future, be looking at a project which our share might be three to five million dollars to fix this problem. Number two, we think our future need is a, our continued investment in infrastructure. We want to be able to continue to maintain roads in fair to good condition. To do that is going to take money on a continuous basis to, to do that. And we've been very successful thus far, and certainly would like to see that continue. And I think the community would as well. And we need to continue to maintain our water and sewer systems. As with anything else, when you pay a little amount, it'll go a long way. If you defer that maintenance, you're going to pay a lot, lot more down the road.
Thank you, Steve. Now, Brent Simon, Planning Director.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'd like to begin by reminding City Council of something Ryan said earlier, saving the best for last. The Planning Department is the last department presenting during the last evening of presentation, so clearly we're very, very special. This is the Planning Department mission statement. I'm not going to read it, it's available online for anyone watching at home. The one major takeaway from the mission statement is, is the fact that the Planning Department plays a very important role in, in creating an environment for investment for the city of Troy. What we do, we are involved in a number of functions for the, for the city. One of the, one of the most important is assisting in development applications. Again, I'm not going to read this, but we also develop and amend the City of Troy Master Plan as well as the City of Troy zoning ordinance. Code enforcement also falls over a third degree of the Planning Department and we're responsible for all code enforcement activities. We enforce a number of various ordinances in the City of Troy and this enforcement helps to, to keep Troy, maintain Troy as a place to, that people want to work with and employ. In terms of personnel, we are using 2008 as kind of a high watermark for the Planning Department. And you see, in 2008, there was a five full-time staff members at the Planning Department. Over time, there was some reorganization, some restructuring. 2013, we now sit at 3.65 full-time employees and two part-time employees. And I'll, I'll briefly explain the 0.65 in a second, but this, this really doesn't tell the whole story in terms of what's happened with the Planning Department. So I use some sticks, some colored stick figures to help me explain what happened. June 30th of 2008, there was, there was nine full-time people and one part-time person that were fulfilling the, the functions that the Planning Department fulfills now. Five full-time members were in the Planning Department and four full-time members and one part-time person were, were in the Building Department. I will also note that the Building Department included sixteen other people, full-time employees and two part-time employees. And in terms of workload, to give you an idea of how busy the Planning Department was, in the first six months of 2008, the Planning Commission considered sixteen development applications. If we fast forward five years, 2013, we see that the staffing has dropped significantly. First and foremost, the Planning Department was eliminated and the services that were, the building inspection services were, have been taken over by our consultant, SafeBuild. But you see a reduction from, from nine full-time and one part-time to 3.65 full-time, two part-times and one planning consultant, assistance in development applications and also on projects on an as-needed basis. The, the 0.65 person you see here is a, is a zoning and compliance inspector. That's the hat he wears under the Planning Department, but he also wears the official hat under the, under the Building Department. So sixty-five percent of his function and his cost is bore under the Planning Department, thirty-five percent of his, of his function and cost is bore under the, under the Building Department. And again, comparing the workload, the, the last six months of 2012, the Planning Commission processed fourteen applications. They see, although there wasn't, with that measurable, there really was not a significant reduction in, in workload, even though the staff has been reorganizing, reduced pretty dramatically. In terms of budget history, again, 2008 was a high point in terms of staffing and, and there's been a reduction over time with the reorganization, with the obvious glaring exception here of 2011. What happened in 2011, well, we had some significant projects that we use a planning consultant to assist us with, one of them being the comprehensively rewritten zoning ordinance, another being the development of the Big Beaver Design Standards. So this added a significant amount of cost and kind of drove this up, but, but you see the trend here where it's the, the reduction in, in costs over time since 2008. We, the Planning Department's undertaken a number of, of cost reductions. Market indicated earlier that we took over some responsibilities from the Building Department. We're, the Planning Department is now the zoning administrator and also administrates the sign code. And we also now have the liaison for the Zone Board of Appeals and the Building Code Board of Appeals. You'll notice there's a lot of anachron, anachronisms here on this, on this slide. We also took over a, a number of responsibilities from other departments. We are now the liaison to the historic district commission, the historic district study committee, the animal control commission and the sustainable development review committee. And there'll be a quiz after this and all these. And we, we now have paperless agendas for the Planning Commission, the zoning board of appeals, the building code board of appeals, animal control commission and sustainable development review committee. That's led to, that's major efficiency and it is, reduce costs significantly. We now provide electronic submitted for all applications, including signs. We've eliminated some functions that we used to undertake, including some mapping and some database management that we, that we did. We eliminated the third, a third monthly planning commission meeting. We initiated the volunteer sign removal program where residents voluntarily go on weekends and pull, legally replace signs from the right of way. Significant cost savings, because, because our staff doesn't have to do it. It also makes, makes Troy aesthetically a nicer place. We eliminated, as indicated, four, three full-time positions in planning, replaced the full-time building and zoning administrator with a part-time, which is a significant cost savings in terms of benefits. Consistent with what SafeBuild has done, all our field inspectors also have laptops and 4G technology, which, which means real-time connection to our, to our network. They used to go out into the field, take notes, come back and have to input the data or have a staff member or staff members input the data. So it's way more efficient. We, our zoning ordinance now allows for more administrative reviews and approvals. In terms of pressures and concerns, we've noticed an uptick in the economy. We're getting, we're getting busier and if we, if we continue to get more development applications, we may need to additional assistance from our planning consultant. There, I think you've been made aware of upcoming changes to labor laws in 2014 regarding paying benefits to part-time employees over so many hours per, per week. If this happens, this could lead to either a, a reduction in level of service for code enforcement or we're going to have to hire additional people, part-time people to pick up the slack for that. Like other small departments, office coverage is challenging. There's not, there's not that many of us anymore. And with, with the additional functions and responsibilities that we've, that we've taken on, maintain, maintaining our effectiveness is, is challenging, as is, as is keeping the office staff with, with, with furlough time we're taking. And furlough time accommodations, merit pay reductions, does make it challenging to, to retain staff. In terms of future needs, we, we'd like the city to continue to support providing professional development and training to staff. We need to continue to work with IT to upgrade our technology. One, one thing that would be very beneficial for us, like I've heard some other departments mention, is flexibility in, in fee payments, excuse me. It would be very beneficial for us to be able to pay, pay for fees using your credit card and, and paying online. It's an efficiency that we've heard a lot of people tell us that would, they'd really like us to take on. And, and finally, we'll continue to, to provide a fast, fair and predictable service to ensure that development standards in the city of Troy are maintained and enforced.
That's my presentation. That's all. That's it.
Thank you, Brian. Questions for staff? First question?
Just out there, I say, throughout all the groups, what would you say the, the average number of years is for people who are working here in Troy? How long have you been here? Do you have a little left, what should say?
No idea.
Tim, what you know?
You look kind of senior back there.
I think if you're looking at Public Works, we probably range fifteen to twenty-three years now, twenty-four years. Office, excuse me, office staff, not so much. More in an eight to twelve-year range.
Really quick, in the Economic Community Development Division, in the, the higher level positions, I'd say it ranges from like thirteen to eighteen.
Chief, Mayor?
Total, total guess would be in the neighborhood of fifteen, eighteen years. I'd take everything.
Chief Dunson?
We're probably pretty close to that. I'd say ordering almost on twenty.
We have two employees with less than ten years and the balance is between fifteen and twenty, and there's a couple with almost thirty.
I think if you would have asked that question three years ago, would have been much different than it is today. I think the early retirement program has probably brought the average age of the employee down considerably. As you would suspect, most employees that took advantage of the program were senior, older fifty and sixty-year-olds. So I would guess that the average age is much less today than it was three years.
Paulson Anderson?
Part-time employees, I notice on just about every department has, you know, X amount of part-time employees. And I guess there's two questions about that. One is, in fact, on one of the earlier slides tonight, they indicated one full-time position was open, yet they had two part-time positions. So I guess the first question would be, is that, are those positions that could be bumped up to one full-time and, or part-time or, you know, I guess one of the worst possibilities there are also?
Quick answer there is no, because then you pay the benefits, right? So that's why you utilize the part-time. The new regulations that are coming down are requiring us to rethink that strategy or rethink how we staff with less than full-time employees.
Okay. And the follow-up to that is interns. I know we use interns and this question came up earlier, well, last week when we were at Wolf College, talking about interns. And I'm just curious, you know, of those part-time employees that we list in all those slides, are any of those interns? None of them interns? Not?
Mayor Phil Tim Fleming?
Yes. How many full-time positions do we have that are vacant, that are budgeted, that we're not able to fill?
Planning has none.
I think Public Works right now, we may have five.
That's not down there. Mainly Police Department, right? Administration. There's been some move-around because of the retirement in the building ops department. Somebody moving from, that's Tom's world, somebody moving from Treasurer's Office to Building Ops. So now there, it's been kind of a shuffle around. So there's one there, I know.
Yeah, I mean, at, at the end of last year, I think we had around 285 full-time positions at the end of the fiscal year and we were budgeted for 319. Obviously during this year, we filled a lot of those in. Human resources constantly tell you it is a long process to find the right people and get that filled up. But we're slowly getting there.
What would you say, chief, in your department?
We're about fifteen short of now. We need to leave servicing some places off.
And over the course of the fiscal year, well, how many, on average, are you short, would you say?
Where it's been lately is where the neighborhoods of, I was going to say in average, like ten in the past few years. But actually, that's light, because we continually have people going and then we're trying to hit those other numbers. So it gets a little bit difficult. We were dropping our numbers, so we were, we had positions we didn't intend to fill. So we just let them stay vacant. That kind of conversation. So I was thinking, Ken, I'm sorry if I'm confusing the answer.
Could I just follow up? Could I just ask, are we trying to fill the vacancy in, in, in your department or are we having a hard time or?
We, we are going to be beginning the process real soon and hope to have that done in about a month and a half, two months. We didn't see a whole lot of need of doing it in the wintertime when we didn't have a lot of use for that individual, but with spring coming, yes, we are going to.
I'd like to add to that, though. I think it was Councilwoman McKinnis who made mention when we had our presentation that, you know, our HR department has been reduced so much that it has been difficult at times to get the, in the queue to hire people. And that's starting to shrink a little bit, but I think with what Gary said, we have people moving around department to department, his division to divisions within. And as we get people leaving, it's taking longer to fill those positions.
So I think, I think a concern from, on the table might be that we need to, if we're going to see a spike in hiring, we need to maybe see some assistance in the HR department. Mayor Phil Tim Fleming, did you have another? No. Also, I guess.
I have two questions. One is for Mark Miller. I know at one point, the Zucker Report, it seems like the different departments that were affected by that report were kind of keeping a running tab on what things have been accomplished and what things were still yet to be accomplished. Is that something that you still do and is that information readily available or would taking a look at the report require a more in-depth review? Because I know you've been short-staffed in all the departments, so I don't know how much everyone has been able to kind of follow up on that, but I didn't know if it's readily available or if taking another look would require.
I think one of our future concerns or future needs, we identified to do just that.
To do it. So it probably needs to be updated. Because wasn't it true? So it probably needs to be updated, because wasn't it true at one point that it was something that you seemed to be following and there was, I remember seeing it tracked.
Yes, we, at one time, maybe two years ago, we, we did sort of a checklist which ones we've accomplished and I think we need to redo that. But at the same time, when we redo that, we should say, what is that still valid or not valid?
Okay.
Because there are some of the recommendations which, which kind of missed the mark. They actually recommended that we increase the building permits size in that report. That'd be one that wouldn't be valid. So it's something we need to do.
I had that written down also, because I, I do, I do recall that the planning and engineering department, when they gave a presentation to us a year or so ago, the Zucker report was, was used extensively to indicate how well those two departments had done to accomplish what the Zucker report's recommendations were. And it was almost that they almost did everything, I thought. But that brings me back, Mr. Kishnik, to my continuing issue is, are we, are we where we need to be with the departments and I'm hearing a lot of issues with hiring now. So if we have vacancies and we're having an issue with HR, whether it's consultants or part-time or whatever, that appears to be an area that needs to be looked at. And I hate to put the chief on the spot, but, you know, he might be able to give us a sense of how difficult and how time-consuming it is from the time you recognize a position opening until you actually hire a police officer. And when you've got fifteen vacancies, you know, you're not talking about two weeks or three months. Some of this takes six months to a year just to get one police officer after you've done the testing and maybe he could, you know, fifteen vacancies, it's a huge, it's a huge undertaking to try and fill five positions, let alone fifteen.
That's correct. It takes a long time. We're using part-time background investigators that were previous police officers with us. We know and trust them, so we hire them back part-time and they do the background investigations for us. Part of our old theory in hiring is to spend the money at the front end, doing extensive background investigations rather than get somebody in and not continue them on probation. Because once you get somebody in, it's very costly to terminate them. So we spend all our money doing good background investigations, make sure we're hiring quality people. Those take a long time. Our backgrounds tend to be neighborhood checks, checks with neighbors, the background checks, the financial history, they're extensive. So I, I can talk about background investigations quite a long time, but I don't want to bore you all with all that. Does that answer?
Yeah, I think the, the point is, it's not, it's not simple and when you create that many vacancies, it's not something you can solve overnight. So it does take, take a lot of time, let alone the other positions that need to be filled in the city that we have an HR department that, that needs some help.
You know, so that's one end of the spectrum and the other end of the spectrum is just a position we interviewed for today. So one single position, full-time, that went vacant in October of last year and we just interviewed for it today. So that gives you a sense, even to, you know, fifteen or one, it's, it's, there's a lot going on down there that makes it difficult to roll those positions through. And then when you get a move around, so someone from treasurer going to building ops, it just compounds the issue.
Well, I think it's so important that we need to know where we're at, you know.
Well, and that's part of this process, right? To figure out where we're at, as you've been saying.
And then we, we need to know how many positions need to be filled and then we, we can target, I think, more than doing just a haphazard jumping around, here's, here's one, here's another. So I think, I think, you know, we're hearing about the streamlining, we're hearing about all the things that have been done and, you know, I think what we need to know is where are, where are, what do we need to do now?
Councilman Henderson?
The last best presentation up there mentioned fees, pay fees online, online. And I know we've talked about that. If we have any kind of idea on maybe a timeline for, for that process?
Well, I can talk a little bit about that. We, in the building department realm, we have, we use the gold standard of Michigan, BSNA, which is, has a core in assessing functions in building. They do have a portal to allow for, but there are some sticky issues related especially to credit card payments, which, which Mr. Garland is tackling, which is a difficult problem for municipalities. It's not, you want to talk a little bit about how, how hard it is?
Mr. Mayor?
Keep struggling.
We're all over this. In fact, we've been, one of our major incentives this year is to get something implemented. Just, just to let you know as an update, we've already interviewed three different providers of online services, credit card processing, along, as you know, recently we changed our, our banking services and so we've interviewed with them too. So we're trying to narrow it down to what would be the, the best platform for residents and our commercial residents, along with processing it in an efficient way. So we're working on that. We're very hopeful that certainly at some time this year, we're going to have that in place. So that will happen.
As an example, Brent, why don't you explain what, what you do with science right now?
We, we allow, as I mentioned in the, in the presentation, we encourage applicants to submit electronic applications to us. Problem is though, we can't pay online or we can't accept credit cards. So we could have someone call from, let's say Brighton, they, they email us or their application is all complete, but they've either got to mail us a check, snail mail, or hand-deliver a check. So it's, you know, we're, we're almost there in terms of being paperless and being really, you know, as, as effective as we can be, but the one missing link is, is online payment and payment by credit cards. It's, it's, if we can, if we can get that, kind of seal the deal on that, I think it's going to separate us, separate us from most municipalities in the state of Michigan.
And then from there, what we want to try to do, especially in the building realm, is to use this digital architecture so that you can actually get your permit issued online, so you don't even come to the building. And then even one step further is monitor your permit, what deficiencies they are. What we're looking for is complex, it's on the leading edge, you know, very few communities in, in the Midwest either striving to do this.
This came to me as a question for the people who've been at council for a long time. The IMCA report, when that was done, that was done how many years ago?
I'm sorry, which one?
The IMCA report, when was that, that was done, three years ago?
No, two years.
Five years ago?
Two.
At that point in time, you know, now as we're moving forward, we obviously have much more challenge as to, look, you've got a city of employees, we don't have enough employees, obviously, and we have issue with payroll pay, we have all the pay issues. We're going to have trouble retaining people, we're going to have trouble drawing people in here. Now, so I don't want to say the IMCA is a bad report because it's very thorough. I mean, is that, is that the gauge that we're going to use for moving our city forward with that report? Or are we going to look where we want the city to go and make the difficult changes? Are we going to be able to bring people in here and get the city to grow at the rate we want it to grow?
I can speak about the ICMA study as long as, as well as Mayor Proton Fleming and Councilwoman McGinnis, but the reason that we, we went out and got the ICMA to come in and take a look at every department in the city was to see, we knew we, we knew we were in trouble with revenue and expenses were going to be higher than revenue if we didn't do something. So we had them come in, take a look at every single department and mainly we were looking for sustainability, because we, we wanted to know how far we could cut and still have a department to be sustainable. So they came in and basically what their job was to, to just tell us how far you could cut just to make them sustainable. An example of that is the police department. They did a study that said the police department would be sustainable at levels that went back to nineteen seventy-nine. No. That doesn't mean that's the police department that you want in Troy, but that's a sustainable police department that could still function. So that was their recommendation. They gave us recommendations about sustainability. We knew after that study and after the cuts that were made, we would have to revisit this in two or three years to see how we were progressing. We had a five-year plan in place and we were looking to see how far that plan was going to take us. And I think that's where we're at today. And that was a, a great job of telling us what we needed to do to get over the hump. And that's why I keep saying to the city manager, where are we now? We're over the hump. You know, we did all these things. We, we streamlined, we cut. Now where are we and what do we need to do now? And that's the job of our council, is to see if we cut the police department too much? Did we cut planning, engineering, law department, all of these areas? It's our job now to see what we need to do in the future. But I think that was an extremely important study that took a look at every single department. And as you, as you've heard over these last few presentations, streamlining, what we've cut, where we are, the vacancies that we've had, the ERIC program caused a tremendous amount of employees that left us. But the good news is we didn't have to lay off one, one police officer.
But if I say I came in here today and did that same report, would those numbers be the same or would they say, hey, you guys are a little short of people there?
Well, I think they would, I think their objective would be different today than it was two years ago. Revenue streams are different, projections are a little bit different and I think, I would hope they would come in and tell us that we cut some areas too much. But they were, they were telling us what we needed to do to get over the hump. That's, at least that's my, my opinion.
All my track. Mayor Proton Fleming?
Yeah, when the ICMA came in, they were benchmarking us against best-in-class, you know, other communities and so forth. The bottom line is, they gave us suggestions and recommendations, but we didn't have a choice. We had to cut. You don't have the money, you can't have the people. I think now we're in a position where we see that we're trying to conquer, we're getting a little better. We want to make wise decisions, not just to go in and throw money at the problem, you know, but I think the HR suggestion, maybe bringing a person to HR to help us get good qualified people where we need it quicker is, you know, a good decision, but we, we didn't have a choice before. Now I think we just have to be wise, make sure we've got good projections of what our revenue streams are going to be, where are we hurting the most? It's our decision, along with the city manager and this team at the council, to, to try to put the right funding, to get the right resources. And, you know, that's what these meetings are all about. Some departments are hurting worse than others. Certainly you have to keep the priorities, the priorities in my mind are still safety. That's got to be a top, top priority. And then the infrastructure, we just heard Mr. Van Dett say we may have a three and a half million dollar problem in sewer that we have to address. Now maybe there's some funding available for that elsewhere, but I think we have to look at the infrastructure, the safety in the infrastructure and what we have to do within every department to maintain that. So it's, we're much better off than we were a few years ago, but we're not out of the woods yet. We don't have, we, I'm not, I don't think anyone at this table would suggest we need to go back to where we were in two thousand and nine or two thousand and ten, because we're not, we just don't have the funding to do it. But we just have to really be diligent about putting the money where it needs to be.
Councilwoman McGinnis?
And I, I do think that our, I mean, that's part of the reason that we're having these conversations to talk about where our priorities are, but sitting at the table today versus three years ago, we definitely weren't looking at this graph. We were really interested in our economic development and, and this creating the environment and investment. I mean, we pretty much knew that there wasn't going to be any investment at that point and not that those things went out the window, but we were in a totally different mode. So, you know, when we're looking at just trying to get to bare bones and have a police department that's sustainable, you know, the, the bare bones, police department, fire department and all those things, those were not, you know, those are not the same things that we're going to be talking about at this point when we're trying to create an environment of investment, because getting people to come here and invest in our community, we're not going to do that by bare bones. And that doesn't mean that we need to create, you know, money that, that we don't have and throw it at, you know, every single department just to beef them up. I mean, I think what we're doing is seeing what is going to be the most bang for our buck in terms of where we need to put our resources back into maybe new places, maybe fill some spaces that we had to cut, but that will help us reach this goal of creating, you know, creating the environment of investment. So it is a different, it's a different conversation that we're having, I think. And it isn't a conversation on how do we get back to where we were. It's, you know, what, what are our priorities in the future and where can we strategically put our resources to, to reach those goals? So I think that's part of what we're accomplishing with these conversations too. And the HR, I mean, that's a huge issue, I think, in my mind. We can't get our departments back, you know, to be as fine-tuned and running as efficiently as possible if we can't get the people to fill the positions. So I think that that's definitely has to be a priority for us when it comes to making decisions about budgeting.
I absolutely agree. Attracting and retaining, you know, is what we've been talking about. The things that we did three years ago are having an effect on attracting and retaining. So we have to revisit those issues. You know, and it wasn't just the IMCA study that, that, you know, that was just one piece of the puzzle that we were trying to put together three years ago. You know, we asked the employees to take a ten percent pay cut. We, you know, we did, we did a lot of things to get us over the hump and it wasn't just one single thing. The ERIC program, you know, you're talking about adding six million dollars back into the fund balance because of that program alone. So it wasn't just the ICMA study, but it was, I think, an important part of it. Definitely an important part.
Councilman Henderson?
I used to work for a, a tax and, selling franchises and instead of attracting and retaining, say getting them and keeping them. And that's, that's, that's been a problem since I was in that, that industry. And we, it's compounded too, because five years ago, six years ago, I think we led the nation in people leaving the state of Michigan for greener pastures. And although we have some pretty unique circumstances in the city of Troy with regard to, you know, our, our financial situation in the past, what we've done in terms of trying to sustain ourselves for the last few years, I don't think it's unique in the metro Detroit area in trying to find personnel and getting them and keeping them. I, I just don't think that, I, I don't think we have any really unique situations. That said, you know, I've spent a lot of time in the last few months, thanks to Brian and some other events that I've been able to attend, just talking to business owners around here that have exact same situations that we're dealing with, trying to find quality personnel or engineering people or whatever. And as a result, I know that there have been a lot of businesses that, that have been cropping up, Kelly Services and, you know, I know they're an old company, but there are a lot of personnel search firms out there trying to cure this problem in the, in the metro Detroit area. So I guess that said, if we're understaffed in HR, what can we do to reach out to some of these other organizations to maybe help, help us get them and keep them?
Good point to, yeah, I think, I think I tried to make that point a little while ago, is if we need, we use consultants and we use outside for all other departments. Seems like if HR wants to take a look at that and see if that's a quick fix, certainly something that we should, should look at. Mr. Kishnik, do we give you enough ideas?
Could I try to summarize this after that? All right. I will start with the premise of, if you've seen on my board, I have up there human capital personnel. It was going to be a separate presentation and I'm hearing this tonight, it definitely warrants it. Capital was the, capital projects was the other, infrastructure. So that's tonight. So with that said, I think we definitely need to review the Zucker report. I think that is an easy one. I think we need to identify ways to fill vacant positions, whether through, you know, HR positions or outside help. I think we need to, IT to enhance, utilize technology to enhance online tracking and fee payments. I think we need to identify ways to attract and retain employees and we've talked about that every night. Two that I would add on here that kind of came up, kind of didn't, was draft an effective communication strategy to utilize all modes of media. communication strategy to utilize all modes of media to get our positive word message out. I think the other one is to pursue longer term contracts for consultants that are beneficial to the city. First one that comes to my mind is Safe Build. It's been an excellent relationship since you guys have done it. You don't want to see your building services contract just go away. So we want to foster that relationship and making it long term is probably one way to do that and to make sure where the core services of your city is, is intact. All that with, this is, this isn't where we've been. This was what kind of a city do we want to be? And now we will transition, since that was the last presentation, into where are we and what do we need to do now? Since the first one was yours, Mayor, this one would be yours as well. It's a natural progression, if you will. Does that sound like a good summary?
Yes. All right. May I move to C2?
Let me move on to C2, capital projects? So as I mentioned, this is a situation where I talk about human capital and then infrastructure and capital. And when I talked about this at the staff meeting, I said we really need to review some of the history of the capital monies that are spent in the city of Troy, look at some current proj, how they're funded and current projects. Bill, who we jumped up and down, he said, I have to be the guy to do that presentation. And so he came to me with the idea that he do this presentation, listen up from the others. And so with that, turn it over to Bill, who does a great job.
In addition to the traffic engineering hat that I wear, I get to the privilege of keeping my DPC engineer hat. And under that position, I spend a lot of my time dealing with capital projects, six-year capital improvement program, and overall budgeting of all the capital in the city. Capital projects loosely is capital projects fund, water fund, sewer fund, and water pool fund. This presentation concentrates primarily on the capital projects and on water and sewer, because water and sewer are both enterprise, not such an issue as what we see with the capital projects fund coming up. That being said, Mr. Darling is going to step in just for a couple of minutes, give you kind of a broad overview of revenues and expenditures. Then I'll take it back over and get into quite a bit more in detail and talk you through the different funds.
Thank you, Mr. Hootery. Twenty-five point nine million dollars of capital. Twenty-five point nine million. That's a, that's a, that's a big city with a big infrastructure. Typically, again, the mechanisms that we use to pay for our capital is our capital projects fund, seventeen point nine million dollars. Our water sewer fund pays for the water sewer improvements and the sewer fund pays for the sewer type improvements, okay? But clearly the big one is our capital project fund, our streets and our drain type projects, along with buildings and equipment. All of that, let's, let's note, from our millage, we, we have 1.53 mils, that's to help support capital projects. That equates to, of that seventeen point nine million, about 6.5 million is from tax dollars. Majority of it is we like to leverage our money, right? We like to use state and federal money to help build our infrastructure, especially our roads and our streets and our Act 51 type of funding for those type of projects. We should note that in November 2008, there was a charter revision. So we really kind of camped that 1.53 mils. There's not a lot of room for growth in that. It's, it's camped as it is right now. And that includes capping the, the general fund at about 6.5 mils, okay? So again, 25 million typically annually of capital projects. Again, it varies depending on the funding that we can use, right, to leverage federal and state funding to do those type of projects. Again, this is kind of a big, for 2013, this is kind of, you know, where we were at when we did the budget. What are those type of projects? Again, water systems, about 5 million a year, couple million for sewer systems. Building improvements, you can see 7.1 million. What do you think that building improvement is? The majority of that is a transit center. Eight point four million dollars, where it says public works construction, that is your road, drains and sidewalks, again, a big part of our capital budget handling. And finally, I really wanted to bring to, to your attention, this is going to be one of our challenges going forward, is the capital projects fund. Clearly, you know, it was mentioned, public safety and infrastructure, right, are, are one of our primary concerns. At the rate that, that we're going, again, we're going to have a challenge finding the funding to keep up with the infrastructure that Mr. Hootery is going to tell you, pay today or pay me twice tomorrow. As we can see, since 2009, we've overspent the revenues that, that we've, that we've received. The green line, whenever is the revenues, the yellow line is the expenditures. Anytime the expenditures are more than your revenues, that red line slopes downward. So you can see we've been using fund balance since 2009 to try and, and fill in the gap between our infrastructure needs and our revenue shortfalls.
All right. Thank you, Tom. What I'm going to get into a little more detail of, and it looks like this laptop is a little different than the one we were looking at today, because some of the things are swed, is take a look, a little closer look at our, our high profile projects and specifically roads, drains, water, sewer. Transit Center, I'm not going to talk about tonight, you guys hear a lot about that. And there is a special study meeting on April 8th that will address that item. So I'm not going to spend time talking about that, other than it's noted up there. Our public works construction at eight and a half million, that is roughly a third of our 26 million capital projects fund, with the lion's share being the major and local roads. Bill, if you'd just go back to that slide, I'd like to interject a little bit. When I talked about public works and the things we do, when you look at those numbers, you say, well, how did you come up with what you need? Bill will talk about major local roads. As far as sidewalks though, we have a 12-year program where we go through every city or all of the city and inspect those sidewalks. And that $500,000 is roughly about what we've needed each year in order to complete those projects and keep our sidewalk infrastructure safe. And our anticipation, as we do inspections a couple of years in advance, that those numbers will be needed to continue for at least five or six more years.
And I'll, I'll interject back, that the sidewalk number that you'll see in the proposed budget is probably going to be about 800,000. DPW is about three years behind to try and pick things up, to try and get back on track. We're going to put, we're proposing to put a little more money into sidewalk funds because it is a liability issue. There's also some revenue that comes back at 800,000. There's roughly about 260, 240, 260,000 come back to the city through payments from residents. So there is a source of revenue from, from that program. And it does address some liability issues, so we don't want to cut that one short. Just want to spend a little bit of time talking, asset management is kind of a buzz phrase for a while, green infrastructure, all those types of things. Asset management is one of the new things that people like to talk about. And asset management is, one of the things it does do is look at what you have, how you maintain it, those types of things. Anything that you have, whether it be a road, water main, your car, is going to deteriorate over time. For example, this is a big deterioration curve. A lot of you have seen this before. What it shows is there's about a 40% drop in quality over the first 75% of time. And at that blue line, what we're calling fair, is where at the latest you would like to do maintenance, if not sooner. On a road, you might do some cracks in joint ceiling, somewhere in the 45, 50% range. When you get to this point, you're looking at milling overlay, something like that. Once you get past this point, you've got a much, you've got the same quality, around 40%, but in a much shorter time, above a 12% of the time. If you listen to Governor Snyder's State of the State, he implied a lot of this here. Because each, what we look at, each $1 you spend at that, kind of that fair point, once you get beyond that point, you're looking at spending five, six, even more down the road. Rather than milling overlay, you're going to be looking at a reconstruction project. Asset management, to me, really is the right fix at the right time, at the right cost. That's kind of what we're trying to do. If we had unlimited resources, we would be doing maintenance before that point. Because we don't want to get there, because once you're there, you're already off the cliff.
When we're talking about Troy roads.
Talking about everything.
You're talking about, are you saying that the county, county applies the same standards to their roads?
No.
Okay.
They don't have the money.
I didn't think so.
Yeah. And you'll see, we'll get a little bit later on, we don't necessarily have the money either in certain areas. The county is, they are in rough shape. I mean, they told us, we did a major road presentation last year. They're not looking at doing pot, or they're not looking at doing a slab work. They're not looking at doing milling overlays. They're looking at doing pothole repairs. If there is not another source of funding, say from the tri-party program, federal dollars, some community share, they don't have the money to do a project, so. Looking at our major road fund, in general, we're pumping in about 3 million to 3.5 million a year in major roads. The number fluctuates generally up to five, six. And years ago, we were up in the 10, 12 million dollar range. And really that is for the years when we have large federal projects, whether it be the right-of-way phase, construction phase. There are some large components that we, we need to fund because we want to use that 8% match. So, but if you cut out all that stuff, base level, it'd be around the 3.5 million dollar range. One of the things we look at, Pacer ratings, some of the old familiar throws, pavement, surface evaluation rating. It is what's commonly termed a windshield survey. There is a trained person, we use a consultant, goes up and drives the roads and assigns a numerical rating. A poor road, something that's rated zero or three. Fair road is a four or five, and a good road, six or better. Troy majors, which is Square Lake, Waddles, Coolidge, Rochester, Stevenson, the great Librae south of Maple, and then Maple west of Coolidge. Are the city majors, we have none that are currently rated. These are as of January 2015. They were rated in the fall before the snow fell. We don't have any major city roads rated as poor. We've done a lot of slab work on Coolidge. We've done a lot of slab work on Rochester and the overlay, Square Lake and Waddles are asphalt. We'll talk about those a little bit as well. Road commission, almost five and a half miles rated poor. So we are going to address some of those with the tri-party program funds that you just approved at your last meeting, probably the most high-profile one, the one that we get most calls about, the one the county's getting most called about, I said by the crooks. 280,000 is what we're looking to allocate to that area. It's not going to fix all the crooks, but it should take care of the intersection. And it is, what we're looking at doing is full-depth slab replacements, so it'll be new concrete. Long Lake east and west of Librae, specifically the crossovers, Librae south and Long Lake, and an area up on Long Lake by Fong, and then area, Big Beaver westbound up from Troy sports, which is just kind of anomaly out there. If you drive by that area, you know, you know what we're talking about. One of the things that we've done, you'll see coming up in the spring and as well as next year and the following year, we've got a little lull between our, our large reconstruction projects, our John R's, our Librae, our Rochester's. So we've taken the opportunity to put some funding towards overlay of our city majors, Waddles and Square Lake specifically. So over the next three or four years, we will have overlaid all six miles of Waddles and Square Lake, which should buy us another 15 years or so. They're at the point now where they could use the overlay. We're picking the right time to do it, and it also is working out with how we have other projects to fund. The last project, Librae, Long Lake to Avon, the county has a federal earmark, it's 100% federal fund, that we were recently notified this year that it was going to be pulled back by the feds unless it was spent. Because originally it was going to be used towards a, a larger reconstructing widening project. That project is well into the future, five plus years. So what they're looking at doing is a maintenance overhaul, it should start in May. So it will improve the ride ability of that road, not a structural improvement, but ride quality, most definitely. Looking overall at our city majors, we're pretty solid in the fair, even bordering on good on our major road. By the end of the six-year capital improvement program, we do believe we'll be up in the good category. Still, we've got an issue with county roads, and it's not going to go away. There is one new hope on the horizon, the National Highway Prevention Program, which is a new funding category under the new highway bill. About 2.5 million that the county has, that, there are eight communities in open county, Troy being one of them, that will have access to those funds. We meet at the end of the month for the, our first meeting to discuss how to do all those funds out. So it may be that all the funds are used in one area, or we may get some projects in Troy. We don't know yet what you'll see in the proposed budget, as I've proposed to provide the local match, about 250 grand, so that if the 2.5 million were available, we could provide the match and take all of it. Because Pontiac is one of the communities eligible, they recently returned all of the federal dollars from 2015. So there is a possibility that we could get more than our fair share, like we did with the tri-party program. And we want to be ready to provide the match to pick up those funds. If it's not used for that match, we would roll it over into major road slabs or industrial roads, even local road slabs to provide DPW with some more funding. Industrial roads, and this has been kind of a misnomer in the past, but really what we look at, it's not a local, it's not a major. Northfield Parkway's, the corporates, Notton Wheat, Piedmont, those types of roads, typically wider than a normal residential, much higher truck traffic, commercial, industrial areas. You'll notice there are almost three miles of poor roads. Some of that's by choice. The area south of Maple, that was what was proposed to be a route for the ITC transmission line several years ago, I think three, four years ago, we were looking at that. They were proposing to run a new main from Coolidge all the way through Troy to the east. We were going to, we had given them a route which went through a lot of our industrial roads that were in poor condition at that time, because they would have paid to fix them. Well, that had a big, big snag up the Michigan Public Service Commission in Lansing, and it's, it's essentially dead now. So now we're looking at it saying, okay, well, we've laid off these projects, we need to go in and do them, so we're looking at funding those types of projects. Cunningham, the old Kmart property, again, we've kind of laid off that, not knowing what's going to happen with the head, with the old Kmart headquarters. But there's still a lot of traffic that goes through in that area up to the data center. So we're at the point, Kurt's asking me, we have to fund something, we got to do some type of work out there. So those are a couple of areas that you're going to see some projects. Some of the other town center, New Kmart, Elliott Rankin, all valid projects, all deserving of funding. Our industrial road condition, over the past several years, we spent about a million dollars a year, sometimes a little more, sometimes a little less. And our industrial road condition is much improved. What we saw is a road, part of our road network that had been kind of to the side. And what we looked at, talking with our economic development people, is good roads is part and parcel with economic development. So we have and continue to fund this. In the future, it's going to ratchet down a little bit, so we can move some funds around in capital. Because capital is kind of a shuffling match, and we got drains, sidewalks, majors and locals, as well as other general capital to try and move dollars around and stay within some reasonable number that Mr. Darling gives. And he tells me I got to hit, or I got to eliminate stuff, so. I try and get to some reasonable number off the get-go, and then as we go through the budget session, that number moves around. Our local roads, we've got about 265 miles of local roads to fund that, and we'll go with $3 million a year, pretty consistently. About two-thirds of our local roads are concrete, one-third are asphalt, a little 4 miles are gravel. We do have a few roads that are rated as poor. Glendale Carlson Park mainly being at one, which is in pretty bad condition, which is set to have slab work done this spring. Three Oaks, which is just north of Waddles, is another one. That's, but that's a concrete road that we're going to go in and do a milling overlay, I think, down on some other areas. So some other local projects, we've got some, one of the other things that we do with our, our local roads is, since we do have asphalt residential, we do have concrete residential, we, we have a lot, $3 million. And so what we're looking at doing is trying to take some of that money, allocate it to asphalt pavement roads, take the other portion, and the lion's share that goes to concrete pavement replacement. Kind of it's a juggling match, and then the chip seals, the other item we saw last Monday night, so that'll be done this spring. Overall average conditions is, this is probably the one where we've got the, probably the biggest issue, because we have been hitting that $3 million budget consistently every year. Our system is still declining. We've just got a lot of miles of road to maintain, 265 miles. So it, it's a big, a big nut to crack here. We looked at it back in 2012, we were asked, what would it, what would it cost to bring our entire network up to good and maintain it? At, in 2012, we looked at about $59 million is kind of just drawl. draw the money you got at it, fifty-nine million to bring it up to good, and almost ten million dollars to maintain it there into the future. So, it's not something that we can say, you know what, let's do it, we don't have the money, it's just not going to happen. But what we would like to do is stay in the fair category, which may require that we bump up that three million to three and a half, three seven, something like that. And that's kind of what you'll see in the CIP, is that there's a little bit of a shuffling in some areas to try and move some money around. Our drain fund, base funding is generally two hundred thousand dollars. That two hundred thousand is primarily for public works, to do drain maintenance, fence replacement, pump maintenance, those types of things. Kind of an anomaly in thirteen and fourteen, it can stick out like sore thumbs. Really, what it is, two projects, Lovington, Minnesota, De Quinder, which is currently under construction, it is funded, it's about a one point one million dollar project, about five hundred and seventy thousand dollars is community development block grant fund. The other project, which will be coming up next year, is what I call the Aquatic Center Pond. The area back, here's town center, civic center, here's the aquatic center, the big old pond out in front. That thing's been silted up for years, it's needed maintenance for years, the culvert's under town, town center, civic center, they've got issues. Culvert is not, it's similar to a bridge, you don't want it to fail, if a road fails, not that big a problem, culvert or bridge fails, big problem. So, they've, they've been in need of repairs, we've had this project in and out of the budget in different flavors, different amounts. Right now, it's about a two point two, two point two million dollar project, because we've been trying to get a federal grant. We were successful in getting a, a federal grant to the two hundred and nine hundred and eighty-five thousand, so that pays for almost half of this project, which is going to remove the dams, remove and replace the culverts under, under the roads, stream bank stabilization, it's a lot like the project that was done at Sullivan Glen. Issue with grant funding in a drains-type project now, years ago, it used to be about water quantity, they wanted to move water, they didn't want to flood things. Now, it's moved a hundred and eighty degrees the other way, it's about water quality, as well as habitat restoration. Both of which are heavily addressed in this project, and was the primary reason that we were the highest-rated project and able to secure almost a million dollars in federal dollars through NOA, the National Oceanic Atmospheric Administration, through the Great Lakes Regional Initiative. We have almost as many acronyms as Brent, not quite, but close. Our sewer system is part of our enterprise fund, so it's paid for through user fees, typically a million and a half to two million a year. Primarily, we fund projects for two categories, infol- infiltration, INI removal, and really what that is, we've got two big districts, Evergreen Farmington, which is kind of the Rouge to the west, and the Troy District, which is Rouge to the east, twelve towns, or GWK to the south, which is a small part. But really, what we're looking is trying to tighten up our system through sewer relining, manhole rehabs. In the sewer system, you're trying to keep the water out, you want to keep the sewage in the pipe, keep the water from getting, water from outside getting in, because that just increases your flow, increases your cost. The other issue, sanitary sewer overflows, or SSOs, you may have read about these in the paper, Steve talked about it earlier, we are under a administrative consent order to have a long-term corrective action plan, which involves the city of Troy, as well as many other communities in the Oakland County, or Water Resources Commission, to come up with a long-term correction action, corrective action plan to address this, because assumption what they, they want is elimination, they do not want sanitary sewer overflows, they want your system to be able to accommodate the flows that you have. Our water system, we fund that, about five million dollars per year, and this is enterprise, so it's paid for through user fees. I know you can't really see this map well, but what I wanted to do is provide you with a little bit of what we look at when we're trying to do planning, this is from our GIS system. What we had done was, we said, well, if we want to know the location of all the water mains in the city that's six inch or less, and we want to cross-reference with all normal water main breaks. DPW, when they, they get a water main break, it's geo-located, it's entered into our system, we can plot that now. So, say, an area up here, let's section four, there's all these green dots, believe me, they're there, those are water main break locations. So, those are areas that DPW's got to send water department guys out, typically, it happens, no night, two o'clock in the morning, three o'clock in the morning, doesn't happen at two o'clock in the afternoon. So, you got to send guys out in overtime. You become reactive when you have a lot of water main breaks. We've been very aggressive in our water main replacement projects, and I think we had nineteen breaks last year.
Yeah, we had nineteen breaks this last year, which is, you know, it, it's unheard of across southeast Michigan for a community our size to be that low, but the other effects of us having these replacement programs, it does affect the rate we pay to Detroit. They evaluate our aggressive engineering of the systems and the maintenance of the systems, and that brings our water rate costs down over time, and that's just as important, if not more important than, you know, not having a water main break in the middle of the night.
So, we use water main breaks as one of the primary areas we look at when we're trying to develop project locations, as well as undersized water mains, we put in eight-inch water mains now, twelve-inch on the quarter-mile, mile sections, as well as major mains, a lot of our subdivisions went in in the fifties, so you've got water mains getting up there, and a useful life of a water main, generally fifty years plus. We also look at coordination with other projects. We don't want to go in, pave a road, put a new road in, and only have a water main break, we got to go back in there, soft cut, remove a new road to address a water main that we should have caught early on. So, technology does help in this type of situation, where we can look and see, okay, well, we're going in to do a, an overlay, should we be doing, should we be looking at a water main replacement as well? Some projects, I'm not going to review the whole list, the only one I'll look here is the last one, section sixteen, that, some of you are quite familiar with that one, that was the water main project that was just completed this past year. We do go back in and do road repairs, overlays, slab replacements, as part of our water main project, typically, it's the following season, so we can let things settle over the winter. If we have pavement settlement, those types of things, we can address those before we go in ahead and put a new surface on it, since it was damaged from the water main construction that comes out of the water pump, one way to stretch some dollars. So, where does that leave us? Pressures and concerns in the capital fund are different from the human concerns, we've got other areas, but we still have similar ones, revenue shortfalls. Everybody's looking for money, we're looking for money, the state's looking for money, the feds are looking for money. It's all over, that, the slide we saw early on is probably, if you take nothing else away, the revenue, we've got revenue here, we've got expenditures here, and we've got a fund balance on almost a whole one-on-one drop. That is probably the most important thing you need to take away, because that's unsustainable. We're balancing, to me, what it is, is we have a level of service that we've provided or been desired, that we can fund. We, we provide a road network, say, at a fair or good, and it is primarily with the capital end, the enterprise is kind of outside of that. So, we need, that's something we need to look at, is how do we fund these capital-type projects? And not only roads, water, or roads and sidewalks and drains, but other capital in the city as well. We've got buildings that age, we've got fire equipment that ages, we've got, all these things, and that's part of what we're doing with our, our large capital program that you'll be seeing kind of tail end of this year. We kind of went through a preliminary run, there's going to be a large, large document, a stack of forms that I filled out, it's probably this big. So, that's a big issue. Legislative environment, at the federal level, you've got sequestration, so you've got cuts across the board, you've got, they're sharing the hurt, everybody's feeling it. So, they're not looking to give us any more money. State level, Governor Snyder, state of the state, he talked about how do we fund our crumbling roads and bridges, I mean, he's looking at a billion-plus issue. He's looking at increased registration fees, sales tax, and at first, there was a lot of positive reaction to it, now, there's a lot of pullback. So, where that ends up, we don't know. Some things that are looked at, outside the box, vehicle miles traveled. What that is, VMT, and you might, if you Google that, you'll, you'll see some information. There's some pilot projects where gas tax is essentially charged based on the miles that you actually drive. So, a heavier user pays a higher tax, and specifically, if you're a heavier user during peak hour. So, if you're on seventy-five between six and nine in the morning, you're going to pay a higher rate than somebody that's on between one to three. So, but there are some real privacy issues with that, because they need to track it. They need to know what time you're driving, where you're driving, where you're going to. So, when you pull up to the pump, you've got a card, whatever, a reader on your card, it can register where you've been, how, where, what times you've been driving. Maintaining the existing infrastructure, we are an older community, but we do have a lot of assets in the ground. I mean, we've got four hundred, four hundred miles of sewers, we've got three hundred miles of road, we've got five hundred miles of water, seven hundred miles of drains. We've got a lot of value in the ground, so we have to maintain it. It kind of ties into the, the higher cost of deferred maintenance. It is, infrastructure's going to age. I mean, if you've got your car, Governor Snyder also used the example, you can change your oil, you can wait for the engine to blow, it literally is, you, you have to maintain it. You can kick the can down the road, the state's been real good at that for many years, eventually, you're going to have to pay, and that's what they're looking at now, you get a billion plus, that they're trying to figure out how to fund, rather than trying to do incremental maintenance work. Trying to fund this stuff as you go, because you can't just keep kicking the can down the road, because it, it really is, and Steve mentioned it, but it is, you pay me now, or you pay me a lot more later, because you will pay, it is something that's going to happen. You can't not look at infrastructure maintenance, it's something that's always going to be there. So, with that, I'll be happy to entertain any questions, and I was very pleased to do this. We're dear to my heart, worship the track.
Good job. You know, this is something that I'm, you know, been very passionate about, the roads and maintaining the roads and infrastructure, because I agree with everything you said, you pay me now, you're going to pay me much more later. And we've talked about this in the past, but I know that there's less and less federal dollars available, but do we have individuals, and maybe it's you, that's really focused on getting every grant that's available to us, or do we need a resource, or does your department need a resource, additional resources, to make sure that we're getting our fair share of any matching funds, federal, probably not going to be much or state, because you can see there are projects we could not have accomplished without matching funds. Do we need more resources, is that, is that an area we need to focus on, to make sure that we're getting our fair share as a city? Because I, I think we're still probably a donor community.
Well, donor community, interstate donor community.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't believe so, because we do use our consultants quite a bit. We, the grant for the Aquatic Center, that was something that Paul Orton Clark was the primary person for us to play those funds. I mean, when we can't attend these watershed meetings, they have a representative, because one of the people we cut was our environmental person. So, what we do is, we have a person in that hovel that attends meetings for us, if Steve or I can go, typically Steve, because it kind of takes environmental.
Sure.
They attend a meeting for us, they provide us meeting minutes, they act as our representative at that meeting, and that, they were the primary reason we got that grant. They fashioned, they took a project, a need that we had, and they said, how can we take this project that you need to do, and meet this grant program? Because it was a large one, because a lot of times, the grants, people are going after you sixty grand. We've got over a hundred million dollars that we brought in for major roads in Troy, federally funded major roads, since I've been here in ninety-five. I mean, that's, it's a sizable amount of money that we brought in here, and that's, we've got several projects coming up, and we've got more federal dollars. So, on the road end, no, because Troy is a, is a member of the Oakland County Funding Committee, I'm the person that attends those meetings. Yeah, large, we're a large community member, blah, blah, blah.
Bill was very, what we want to say is, Bill's very involved in
Yes.
how roads get funded, and he's there at the table, lobbying, you know, he's there from the ten years.
Yeah, a lot of the questions, if there's questions about certain things, like the funding committee, I'm part of the technical committee, I'm part, I'm part of the review committee, I review those applications. If there are issues about how to spread money around, I've been involved in them. So, I'm very, very active in the road end of it. On the environmental end, we do rely a lot on our consultants, but they are, they are out there continuously, because they've got staff, and that's all they do, and that's a very good use for a consultant, because that's all they do.
We have been very aggressive in the thirteen years that I've been here, and even before I got here, because it takes a long time, once you get those funds, to actually be able to spend them, and it takes on average about ten years, but we have been very aggressive in obtaining federal funds for road projects, and we've seen a lot of those projects over the last, last ten years, and I think, to be honest, we've got our fair share in that some.
And really, when I talked about the NHPP, that is something, that's another thing, it's another way. I mean, we've, I don't, I don't know how to put this politically correct, but years ago, we were able to acquire Long Lake Road reconstruction, about a twelve million dollar project, we did it from John R. to De Quinder, by taking twenty-five thousand dollars for the design phase. We knew we couldn't design that project for twenty-five thousand dollars, but we knew, if we got that design money, also, we are now considered the next phase project, and we get funded before anyone else. So, we said, you know what, we'll take that twenty-five grand, and we'll pay the difference. So, we paid four hundred thousand dollars or so to design it, but in the end, we got twelve, thirteen million dollars to build that project before somebody else got funded. So, there are little things like that that you can do to try and, try and obtain funds. This NHPP program, two and a half million dollars, that's why I've got the funding for the match that's in there, because if, if we can't use it to match, you know what, DPW can do two hundred and fifty thousand in slabs in two weeks, we got plenty of work for it. But, should four of the communities say, you know what, we can't provide a match, well, here's Troy, we'll take everything you got, we'll take the entire two and a half million and we'll match it. So, that's, one of our, our priorities is, we want to use other people's money to do our work. And that's really, when we're looking at projects that we budget, we want to use federal dollars, we want to use tri-party money, we want to use grants, whatever we can get our hands on, we're going to use, because we want, we have the ability to match it, even like if, let's say, we had, there was a pot of money that fell from the sky, maybe we defer some of the overlays on Square Lake and Waddles to address the county road, because it is a higher need. But those are the types of things that, as things go, it just continually changes. So, I am somewhat passionate about it.
We're not missing opportunities, you gave me the answer, we're not missing opportunities for matching funds or whatever, we're on top of it.
I'm not going to let you go. I think this council did give a mandate a couple, three years ago, about maintaining roads to the fair condition.
Yep.
So, I don't, I don't think we're kicking the can down the road, so I think, as we're summarizing here, that is still, I think, a mandate of this council, as Mayor Potem Fleming has indicated, we understand the infrastructure is as important as anything, and we still need to maintain the fair roads.
Yep, and, and what you'll see in the budget that comes up, that you'll be looking at in April, is a six-year CIP that is going to address that. We, so we're looking at staying at that fair level, and so there, there are some things we're going to need to do in the out years, the next couple of years, yeah, we'll be all right, because we still got a little bit of fund balance left, not too long, I'm going to like when I say that. But we are, we are, we are exceeding our revenue, so, and that's something we need to get away from, so over the years, if I strip out all the federal dollars and the grants and whatnot, I'm trying to get down to that six and a half or so million for full capital, which is a tough thing to do, if you've got three million in open, three and a half million in majors, that's six and a half right there. So, it is, it is a juggling act, but it is something that we're going to have to do, it's part of what we need to do. But yeah, that is, that is definitely a priority for us, to try and maintain our road system, and that's part of, if, if we need to, because when we look at major road fund, maybe three and a half, and locals is three, but in the end, we may say, all right, you know what, we're going to take a half million and throw it at locals, because that's where the need is. So, it's, it's kind of been, works with us quite well, looking at capital as, all right, here's your capital, twenty-five million, or whatever the number may be, not three and a half million here, or three million here. So, we, we look at, can we move this around, with the city manager's office and Mark, and come to them with proposals, and say, you know what, we've got some funding, chip sale, we've got some funding that county project didn't materialize this year, we've got some dollars that we would like to utilize in a different fashion to take care of a need. Yeah, let's go ahead and do it, we need, let's get council approval, let's go ahead and do it. We want to be able to do that, we want to be proactive, we don't want to be reactive, we don't want to sit back and wait for something to happen, we want to try and address it before, before we need to, and that's, that's what we should be doing.
I think that's the consensus from his table, is that we want to continue to do that. We've taken capital money, hope, in the last few years to balance the budget, you know, the trails, and, but we didn't take money from the infrastructure.
We did not.
And we will never take money from the infrastructure, as long as this council's here. But we have taken money out of cap to balance the budget, when we had hard times. But we have taken money out of capital to balance the budget, when we had hard times. Any other capital questions?
I'll be back.
I think you summarized it very well, infrastructure's major, that's very good. No use of, no, no taking capital money away from capital projects.
It's pretty simple. Our next order of business is public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak this evening? If you come to the microphone, give us your name, and as usual, three minutes.
My name's Marv Reinhardt, Troy resident, over 57 years on and off. The thing I like to know, that you keep talking about Troy is such a good place to do business, then why doesn't Troy use any vendors from Troy? Because if the Troy city doesn't want to use vendors, I know there's a bidding system out there, but when I go to Somerset, avoid the city of Troy buying my products, I do not shop compared to what it costs in Claussen to versus Troy. But apparently, I shouldn't buy anything in Troy, because Troy doesn't buy anything in Troy. And to me, that's upsetting, when you say, what type of city do you want to be? Well, we're not using our own resources, we outsource everything, which is fine, we've got lots of money, we can keep taxing the people to buy outside sources. And our former police captain over there, Chief, I used to see him, he had a little bit more color in his hair, you know, I got, you know, and he and I had gone round and round on certain issues, and I'm not somebody that hides in the hole. Also, too, when, whoever designed these roads in Troy, I don't know what they do, but you go down Rochester Road, just at Hooters, if you go north on Hooters, and you're trying to make a right-hand turn in 16 Big Beaver, you can't, because the paint is fixed to the point, that the people in the far left lane is out further than the people in the right-hand lane. So how can you make a right-hand turn there safely? Okay? Second of all, look at the intersection of Waddles and De Quinder on the south side, that turn areas are hacked up. There's another thing that, I don't know who designed that, and also the Rochester Road project. When you say capital concerns, we lost $5 million on one piece of property on Rochester Road, and if you try to make right-hand turns on Rochester Road all over the place, you have to be in the walk area, where people walk across, and that is a tickable problem in Troy, you could be ticketed for being there. Also, too, there is no such thing as litter laws in this city. You can grow grass up to 11 inches tall, which would tell me, maybe I should hire a farmer to come bale the hay. At least the city wouldn't have to pay a million dollars for somebody to mow the grass and bowl it down into our drains, as you see on a continual basis. If you park at the community center, you can come back with grass on your car, because those guys cut the grass and bowl the grass into the parking lot. So I don't know what type of city you want to have, but we better consider the people, because the business people you're talking to don't do business with the city of Troy, they do business with other people. Have a good day.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? If you can come to the microphone, please, state your name, if you're a resident.
Good evening, my name is Ellen Hoderek, and I'm a resident of Troy. The kind of city that I would like Troy to be is what I have been seeing with these special study sessions, this has been outstanding. This is the first one I've attended in person, but I have been watching them on must-see Monday Night TV as well. As many of you know, I used to work at the city part-time in community affairs, and what this has done, and what I knew, and what I would see in fits and starts at city council meetings for the years previous to the time that we had the property tax plummet, was an amazing staff that cares deeply about the work that it does for its residents. And if folks have been watching, and I don't know if they have, they will have seen that, they will have seen how this staff has weathered furlough days that were fondly nicknamed F days when I was here, because, not because they weren't being paid, but because people were struggling with serving the residents in the time left. This is good stuff. There was a lot of honesty, and candor, and collaboration at this table. I hope that the residents in this city, who choose to be outspoken about issues with this city, watch and don't twist information and numbers for political gain. That will harm this forward momentum we have, that's what caused a lot of trouble for us. So, as residents, I hope we can come behind you as ambassadors of the city, the staff, you as a council leadership team, and stand for what's right in Troy, what needs to be done to protect infrastructure, safety, and quality of life venues as best we can. We need to be positive, and we need to be factual, and all the facts are in these study sessions. I look forward to the budget study sessions, and I really appreciate the time you all have dedicated to this effort. Also, I'd like to say happy birthday to a certain councilman, Jim Campbell, thank you.
Anybody else that would like to speak this evening? We will be back at 7:30 Wednesday, or 13:00, or no, we can't.
There's nothing this Wednesday, there is, but it's the South Oakland.
That's right, I knew there was something. Okay, thank you, we are adjourned.